Good evening and welcome to the Eastern Carver County Schools Virtual Town Hall. We thank you for logging on. This is going to be a very unique experience for all of us, the first time we've ever done this here at the Eastern Carver County Schools. Before I introduce my panel over here, I'm going to let you know how this works. First of all, I'm Scott Wasserman from Fox 9 News. I'm going to be moderating this event. I'm going to be asking the questions, your questions, to our panel. Now, at home, as I've said, you can log on. You are logged on right now. You can tell your friends, call them, have them log on right now. You can ask questions. Our moderators will be taking your questions. They're going to give them to me. I'm going to get them here on this computer screen, and then I'm going to get to ask the panel. I'll also be asking follow-up questions so everybody at home can understand what is at stake here with the two questions come November 5th. Now, first of all, I want to introduce my panel. Thank you guys for joining us. We really appreciate it. First, Carol Bobb. She's a school board chair. Jim Balk, our superintendent here. DeeDee Karing, our finance and operations director. Thank you for joining us. And Brian Beersford, who is, of course, the teaching and learning supervisor here at Eastern Carver County Schools. Now, first of all, we want to give a chance to Carol to have an opening statement to let everybody know exactly what is at stake on November 5th.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, everyone. On November 5th, voters have a choice on two referendum questions for our local schools. The school board's priority is student achievement, and that is what this referendum is really about. The first question is a no-tax increase renewal. By law, this funding expires after 10 years, and we must renew it or it ends. The funding has allowed the district to keep class sizes low, to add hands-on science in every elementary classroom, and to add 20 advanced placement classes. These are just a few of the programs made possible by this funding, and without it, we will look at reductions of up to $9.1 million. The second question asks for $2.4 million in security and technology and learning for six years. Security at all schools will be improved. Students and classrooms would have access to adequate technology tools and digital curriculum. The reality in our schools is that the technology is aging. Often, students and teachers have to wait for as long as 15 minutes simply to boot up their computer and log on to the network. Many of the computers that students and teachers rely on cannot handle current software. This is not a one-on-one device initiative. The goal here is to put the right tool in the hands of students when they need it. As we personalize learning for every student, our classrooms will need adequate tools. The tax impact of question two very recently became much more reasonable. This is because the school board will be lowering the district's total tax levy significantly, and this will offset the increase from question two. So, on an average-priced home in our district, which is about $285,000, the net tax increase is only $4 a year. Thank you for joining us this evening, and thank you, Scott, for moderating this event.
Well, I heard a lot about taxes here and tax levies. Somebody at home might not understand tax levies. What is that? How do you guys lower taxes, raise taxes? Okay, all I know at home is that if you are going to ask me for money, if there's going to be more money, it's going to raise my taxes. DeeDee, is this correct? Are my taxes going to be raised for question one and question two? And if so, how much?
Sure, I can help you with that, Scott. So, question one is a renewal of an operating referenda that was initiated in 2003 by the voters, and it expires in this current school year. And that question is the same as this dollar amount as it was before, so there's no tax increase to that question. Question two is asking for $2.45 million, and that on the ballot will state that it is a tax increase. However, with what Carol talked about, school board action and some new changes in legislation, we will see very minimal tax increase to the home. As Carol mentioned, on a $285,000 home, about $4 a year. And there's three main reasons for that, Scott. The first is the state installed some tax levy reduction, and that was with some state aid that came in that replaced the tax levy on an operating question. The second had to do with some lowering of taxes that the school board did, and the third had to do with refinancing of our bonds, which lowered our overall debt obligation and our levy.
So, just to be clear, $4 on the average a year, the entire year, that's all my taxes are going to go up if I answer yes to question two?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, there's going to be a lot of questions about what's going to happen to our schools, our school district, if these don't pass, if they do pass. First, let's start with question one. Jim, I want to direct this to you. Question one, what happens if it does pass? Why would that be good for the school district?
Well, basically, first of all, parents in surveys have indicated they're really happy with the quality of programs and services we currently offer. So, question one, the root of question one is keeping those things in place. And it's also keeping things that we've added recently in the last five or seven years. I think in Carol's opening statement at the secondary level, she talked about AP courses, Project Lead the Way. At our elementary level, it is things like the Law Academia Dual Language Immersion Program, Kinder Academy. It's also keeping class sizes reasonable, which is near and dear to parents in our district. And so, right now, our elementary class sizes are just slightly below the seven-county metro average, Scott, and our secondary are just slightly above the seven-county metro area. So, those are like value-add pieces that that $9.1 million brings to the table for our residents, parents, and students.
If it doesn't pass, if it fails, let's first talk about class sizes, which you mentioned. How much will class sizes increase for students and for parents, because parents are concerned about that?
Well, the board hasn't adopted a final reduction plan yet, Scott. They've put together a framework of that $9.1 million because they really wanted to know, what would it look like? What would have to happen in our district to balance our books, which we're required to do? Contrary to state and federal dilemmas, we're required to have a balanced budget come June 30. So, we put together a plan. It was reviewed by an advisory group. Back to class sizes. The average class size in that preliminary plan would increase about 20% to 25% across the district, or four to five students. And that has implications for you as a teacher, Scott, if you were to try to reach out to every child on an individual basis, on a daily basis. It's going to make that a lot more tougher.
Class sizes, we touched on that. What happens to other programs if question one does not pass? Are we seeing losses of football, basketball, sporting events? Are we seeing music gone? What are we seeing?
There'll be some other proposed cuts right now, Scott. You'll see program shrink. You know, those AP classes we talked about, Law Academia. We can't continue to fund everything that our parents want if those dollars aren't there that we so desperately need. There are additional budget cuts, too, in the area of co-curricular. In the preliminary plan, there's about $400,000. Haven't determined what would be reduced or eliminated, or what that approach would be, but there are cuts across every spectrum of the district to get to that $9.1 million.
Does that include teachers losing their jobs because class sizes will increase?
That is correct. In fact, if the board went with the preliminary plan as is right now, Scott, it would mean about one out of eight or one out of nine teachers losing their position for the following school year.
I want to get to question two in a moment, but really quick, I had one follow-up question to that. So, let's say it doesn't pass. Can't you just find that money elsewhere?
No. It's revenue that we've come to rely on. The state of Minnesota right now, if you look at all school districts, about 90% have local operating levies in place to provide basic services and programs. And when I started 35 years ago, that wasn't the case, but it's become the norm today.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Brian, let's touch on you with question two. A lot of people in the community, I live in this community, we understand question two as a technology question, but it's more than a technology question, just to clarify, correct?
That's correct. It's security and technology bundled together in question number two. So, the first year, if the question is approved, would increase or improve security in each of our schools, including cameras, visitor check-in systems, secured entryways or vestibules. And then, years two through six would actually fund technology and help with our mission of delivering personalized learning for each student. And teachers have been working quite effectively and anxiously wanting access to additional tools to provide that personalized learning. As we look at revising and adopting new curriculum to provide best practices for students, a lot of it really requires digital curriculum and access to tools, not only that we have in the district, but services outside the district and across the world.
Be specific. Are we looking at more iPads, iPads for every student, more computers? What specifically are we talking about?
We're not looking at a one-to-one program. I know many of our surround districts have done something like that where it's an iPad for every student at a certain grade level. We're really looking at providing the appropriate tool for what is needed for that time and for that classroom. So, that may be a blend of some tablet-type devices such as an iPad or some Windows-based devices. It could be desktops for our engineering classes that require a more rigorous, robust machine. It could be laptops for other students who are doing more composing or creating items that they would need, something like that.
I know our community members have a lot of questions that they want to ask. We're going to get to that in just one sec, but the final question I have for you is question number two. If that fails, what are we looking at? I mean, obviously, we can't put additional stuff like we've been talking about if it passes, but what does that mean to the kids if we can't add some of that stuff, such as security and some of that technology?
Well, you know, the reality is, we're not, kids need to be able to access the tools that our world is using. And we're talking about the youngest learners in the district who, this is the world that they grew into. They don't really know a different world other than a very digital-based world. So, we're kind of limiting their experience and curtailing what they're able to do and what teachers are able to deliver upon.
Technology is changing every day. How important is it for technology to kind of change with the times for our schools?
It's incredibly important, because it's not just the technology that needs changing, it's the access that the technology brings to the classroom. So, access to social studies materials, math curriculum that adjusts to the students' needs and levels. So, it really has become a very customizable tool to get access to things that teachers and students need.
I appreciate that. Now is going to be the really fun part, I think, of this virtual tour. We've had viewers at home able to log on. They're actually getting to ask questions, and this is something new for the panel here. They get to actually answer those questions that have been brought in. So, I'm going to start with Kirk here. He's got a question about security, and the pieces are only funded, let me start over. This is a question from Kirk, so we're going to go word for word here. The security pieces are only funded during part of the first year, then why is it included rather than a separate question? I think that's a really good question, and just to, thank you.
I'll start with that, Scott. Then others can chime in. You know, we've had that question in the community when we've been out presenting and going over referendum information. The reality is, is if you look at that question, about 1.8 million out of that first year, if it's approved, will be spent on security. Of that 1.8 million, 1.1 million is bricks and mortar. In other words, entryways and changing doors to really force traffic through an office first, so they have to meet and greet with somebody before they enter into the building. The other $700,000 plus are cameras, visitor check-in, and keyless swipe entries for our staff to use, all technology. We also need the technology in the question down the road, the infrastructure pieces that I'm sure we'll talk about later in the show, in order to drive the cameras, the visitor check-in, and the keyless entry. So, there is a marriage there that's very appropriate, and we'll come back, though. After five years, our promise to the community is we're going to come back and revisit that security. Are there things that we need to upgrade five years later to make our buildings more secure from a physical standpoint? And then make those modifications in year six, and then carry forward from there.
DeeDee, you know, obviously, and the whole panel here, with Newtown, Connecticut, of course, our most recent tragedy, which was terrible for this entire country, security was first and foremost on the thoughts of everybody. Why can't we just find that money and do it? Why do we need a question to answer that? I would think that, as a parent at home, I'm like, just find it and do it. We don't need to sit here and answer a question yes to be able to have that happen.
Sure. Well, $1.9 million is not funding that we just have idly sitting around. So, having this as part of the question will provide us the stream of funding that we need to get this put into place. And as Jim just described, also with the infrastructure that we'll put in place, we'll be able to support those, and then look at that again in the future when we review this operating, or this referenda.
Do you want to add to that, Carol?
Yeah, I will add to that. We have been very careful about checking in with our community and finding out what they want and what's important to them, and we did a couple surveys where we asked them what was important to them and what would they put as a priority. And both security and technology came in as priorities in both those surveys. So, from our standpoint, too, the community is telling us that they'd like us to make these changes and to add these things. It ends up being, I think it's nine buildings that need the, not all of our buildings, some of our newer buildings are great, but nine of our buildings need some changes to the entryways, so that they're more secure.
And are they not secure now?
Well, there's-
That would be a question at home. Are they not secure now? I don't know, Jim?
I would say, from the standpoint of our parents, since the first day I've been here, Scott, this is my fourth year in the district, I've heard about it at Jonathan Elementary to East Union Elementary to Chaska Elementary to Chaska Senior High School, consistently from those 10 spots, those nine buildings where that entry doorway piece is lacking, those parents have been loud and vocal starting four years ago. And I think the other thing that the capital question does for us, it gives us all that funding at one time to put it consistently throughout the district so that everyone's at the same kind of level or standard, no matter what building you're attending, whether it was built 30 years ago, or as in the case of Chan-Hassan High School, you know, just a few years ago.
And I think during my research, I apologize, I think it was question one or question two, resource officers, which are very important right now, would we, I think we'd lose resource officers? I believe it's question one fails, is that correct?
That is correct. We'd lose both of those positions and the funding for those positions. That's on that tentative list again of likely reduction.
And that goes down to security and protecting our children, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we've got another question. It's from Brian. If the technology question passes, where will District 112 compare to surrounding districts on a per-student basis for technology funding? Brian, I know you had touched on it just a little bit, not one-to-one, but where would it compare?
Well, that's not really a number that we look at when we're looking at just, is it a one-to-one or a number of computers to student? It's really, how are we deploying the equipment and the tools that are available to us? And we feel like we're very strongly positioned to use the tools that we're going to gain access to through question tool to be able to provide the students, provide, excuse me, the tools students need to be very successful in their journey around personalized learning. So, if a child is needing access to a device to work on a math program that, again, is tailored to his or her needs and making progress, they would have that access.
How much behind would our students be compared to the rest of the students in our surrounding districts? I mean, whether it be Shakopee, Minneapolis, you know, even going forward to Blaine and Oka County area? Would we be lacking well behind those other communities that maybe have better technology?
Not from an instructional standpoint, as far as, the education the students would be getting would be definitely good, but the tools that we would want to provide to them, that would be lacking, that we wouldn't have those tools.
But that's important, Jim, isn't it, to have those tools? If you say we're not lacking behind in the teaching, we're lacking behind in society.
Yeah. I would, maybe our production staff can put up chart number four, Scott.
Okay. We have charts to show, by the way, we have charts to show you at home. Hopefully, slide number four can come up and show the slides.
And really, on that slide, what the viewers are seeing right now are what's called capital project referendum dollars, Scott. These dollars in each one of these districts are dedicated to technology only. And so, you can see our neighboring districts, Shakopee does not have one. You mentioned Shakopee in your question with Brian. And Shakopee actually has a bond issue coming up this spring for building a second high school, so there's some other-
Didn't do my research.
Yeah. But there's some different priorities there. Bloomington is going back out this fall and asking an additional question for security and technology. Hopkins is going out for one. Eden Prairie is asking for a renewal. The question that we have before our community, the 2.45 million, equates to about $236 per student. We would spend in addition to that, though, Scott, we have some capital dollars that we spend annually on technology. It's about $1 million to $1.2 million. That averages to about $100 per student. So, if you added the two budgets together, if the referendum passed, along with the capital budget, we would spend about $336. So, we're still not on that chart, you know, way over to the right side, but we're making some ground there that would provide the revenue necessary to get the tools in the classroom.
When I've talked to many members of our community, the biggest concern that they had when we were talking about the referendum and, of course, question one, now this specifically, question two, maybe DeeDee, this would be a good question for you. A lot of people would say, and I'm just using their words here, they kind of snuck that security question in there. So, of course, I'm going to have to pass this because my concern is for security. Why did you put the two together?
Okay. Well, I see it as two reasons. One is, as we've talked about earlier, in that the technology requirements that are in this proposal include some need for infrastructure in our technology-related. So, the cameras, the key swipes, all of those are related to that. And the second thing that I would say is that the 1.1 million, that's the bricks and mortar of doing those vestibules, is really a relatively small amount, and to do a separate question would make it just a little more difficult for community members to understand. So, we thought, we'll just get it all done in one question, include it, and get it done the first year, and as Jim said, make sure that all of our schools are at that same level and have that same entryways and visitor badge check-in as well.
Okay, now, we've got a question from Jan, and she says Clover Ridge has a security entrance. How did they get theirs? And where did the money come from to do that at Clover Ridge? Which one of the, go ahead, DeeDee.
I can take that question. When Clover Ridge was built, just like Chan-Hassan High School or Victoria Elementary, no, sorry.
No, no.
Jim?
I'm sorry.
It was not-
Worked in cars.
It is one of the newer buildings, but that vestibule was added afterwards, and it was before DeeDee's time and my time. And I'm not sure where that funding was found to do that, whether it was some grant money or some other things. So, I can't answer, so we'll have to get back to Jan at Clover Ridge with a specific response for her. But it was added after the building was originally opened up.
Okay, Jan, if you have another, yeah, go ahead.
Well, and I remember that some of the driving force was security issues in that neighborhood.
Oh, yeah.
And so, a group got, you know, got behind that issue and said, hey, we need to do something with this. They worked with Scott Knight, chief of police, and with the school district, and something was done at that time, so.
Yeah, well, Jan, don't be discouraged. If we couldn't answer your question, we are going to get those answers, and of course, we have your email. We're going to make sure we get those answers for you. Please keep sending in those questions. You know, and when we talk about questions here, Kirk wants to know, our tax dollars also went toward installing the Carver County Fiber Optic Loop. Can we coordinate our infrastructure with that? Is that a-
I can start with it.
Yeah, sure.
Actually, the Carver Link is very helpful for us. The two main pieces where that comes in as really beneficial is one, East Union, which is way on the west side of our district, which was operating off of T1 lines, Scott, and for our viewer that chimed in. And so, that is saving us some dollars each and every year now, now that that's up in lit fiber. The second area where there's direct access for the district, we just recently purchased a used building in our community for what's called our STAR program, is for special ed kids that are 18 to 22 years of age, and that fiber link goes right into that building. So, we didn't have to build that infrastructure as we take over that building and run that program in that building. So, those are two right-up-front costs right away that just hit our budget right away in a very positive way. The second use of Carver Link right now is, it's what we call a fiber for redundancy. Two years ago, the fiber out to Victoria Elementary was cut by a contractor. We get into disputes then as to who cut it and who's going to repair it, and had that happened on a school day, Scott, they would not have been, because it was out for over a week, they would not have had any internet service, telephone service, absolutely nothing that's tied to technology. So, that dark fiber running for us, or that extra line, that redundancy line, is pretty critical for our district. I don't know, maybe there's some things going on.
No, I was going to mention redundancy, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Back, back.
Okay. You know, Brian, I want to ask you this question here. When it talks about teaching, two years ago, the technology piece did not pass, and if I remember right, security was not tied in, correct, at that time?
That's correct.
So, somebody at home might say, okay, that technology piece didn't pass, so for two years, we've been fine without it?
Well, I would say we've not been fine without it, but we've been struggling to make kind of some ends meet, and we've done some things to make progress along the way. Our PTOs at various buildings have been phenomenal fundraisers, and they have helped us out a ton with trying to bring devices and access to schools. Even at one of our elementaries, the PTO helped fund some wireless access points, and we just feel like we're creating some inequities by doing that, and so we really want to make sure that all of our students have access to appropriate technologies.
And Carol mentioned, I believe, in her opening statement, was the effect that sometimes teachers, they're trying to log on to the computers, they're failing. How difficult is it when you're trying to do a lesson and it just puts you 15, 20 minutes behind, and it just really puts the day in a whack, if you will?
That's right. Anyone who remembers being in the classroom knows that any distraction can really just throw everything off kilter. And that does happen in classrooms where the wireless fails or half the classroom is able to gain access, the other half is not. So, it really does pose challenges for teachers and students.
We've had instances with even with state-required testing, where they're required to do testing on certain days, and there's all these rules about the testing, and our technology has its difficulties, and then that gets in the way of even our state-required testing. So, especially in a lot of our older buildings, we just don't have the infrastructure that we need so that it's reliable.
You know, and to continue on with the technology, Kirk wants to know about Wi-Fi. Will there be reporting on what sites the students are accessing in schools and on buses? Does the district block social networks to reduce bandwidth costs? And when you talk about, I actually did a story at Fox 9, I came here, did it on the Wi-Fi, shameless plug. We did a story on the Wi-Fi that came to our buses, and I remember even asking that question about sites. Parents are always going to be concerned, I'm a parent in the community, I'm going to be concerned about what sites they can and cannot access. Brian, would that be for you?
Well, yes, we deploy a filtering software, so there are certain things that are restricted to students, so that's part of it is filtering. Additionally, we also have software and management tools to help kind of throttle or shape the access to certain sites. So, if we're doing state testing, we want to make sure that our resources, our bandwidth, is going toward what we really need to have happen.
So, you do block sites that-
There's sites that are blocked, that's the filter-
Facebook, Twitter, are those blocked?
Facebook and Twitter are not blocked by the district.
And I guess while we're on that, would this help increase Wi-Fi on more buses? Or is that-
Actually, our entire bus fleet has Wi-Fi.
It does, see? I just did it with the first ones that went on there, so that's been very helpful. And, you know, following up here, how was the district able to put Wi-Fi on those buses?
Actually, the district, part of our PowerUp grants a year ago, out to staff, provided, I think it was 13 buses as a trial last year, and so the district provided not only the Verizon access, but also the Wi-Fi connections. This past year, though, however, positive connections loaded it on the rest of the buses. We have just a handful of buses that don't have Wi-Fi access anymore. And it's, I remember when I went to the bus drivers, DeeDee was with me this summer, we went and presented to the bus drivers some information, and when we announced that Wi-Fi was going across all the buses, there was this loud cheer, because what they have said to us is, it's managing student behavior so much better. Kids are tied into maybe doing homework, whatever. We see it as a real benefit when co-curricular events are happening far away from the district with homework time. Teachers are using it during field trips, they're going down to the science museum. Kids can log on and be doing preparation work on the way down to the science museum. And we see some benefits, Scott, too, down the road with just emergency and data that's available when we have to evacuate kids or whatever the case may be, or videoing and being able to deal with situations on a bus. So, some real positives there, too.
And to kind of switch gears a little bit, Kirk, I think, has a really good question I think a lot of people know. I don't care if it's $4 or $400, your taxes get raised. You want to know where your taxes are going. You want to know exactly what you're going to be getting. Will people in this community be able to log on somewhere and be able to find out exactly where you're spending their money?
On the technology-
On the technology side of it, yeah. DeeDee, maybe?
Yeah, on the technology piece, we'll be able to tell the community what we've spent that money on. I mean, all of school finance, you have to report in what's called UFARs, which is a technical term for accounting, but you have to track where you're spending the money, and we'd be able to easily provide that back to our community members.
You know, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, and plus, they can look on the website right now on the technology and security question. They can see building by building, where are those dollars going to, what is the purpose of those dollars? And then, like DeeDee said, you can quickly follow up on an annual basis, because we have to report that in a separate funding expenditure code.
Not sure what appropriate this would be for you, for which one of our panel. But people, Joe at home, wants to know, if both these fail, property taxes, would they be lowered? And if that gets lowered and we have schools that he says are quote-unquote "bad" schools, does that mean my property taxes are going to be lowered because we live in a school district that our community doesn't support? Can anybody answer that?
That's a convoluted question.
It is. So, maybe let's try to narrow it. If they don't pass...
What happens with taxes?
Yeah.
The overall gross levy for everything in the district, local taxes would go down about 24%. Now, on an individual property, on your house, Scott, on Carol's house, whoever, that range of reduction, because both questions failed, would probably be somewheres between 15 to 20%. Because the questions have two different tax bases to them without getting too technical. So, that's why we've told people it'd be about 15 to 20% reduction. Basically, they can look on that chart where they see how much question one costs them, which I think on an average price home is X amount of dollars, $300-some dollars in that $285,000 house. That's how much their school taxes would go down, and obviously, question two would go down with it, too, then.
Sure.
Does that mean that...
Yeah, no, that's fair.
Does that answer the question? Okay.
It seems like you had a second part to that question.
Yeah, the second part. I was going to say, go ahead.
Well, I can't remember.
Well, the second part was property values.
Property values. I mean, if you live in a district that is, and I'm just using his words, quote-unquote "bad" schools, does that affect our properties?
I think it does. Realtors have told us is that it does. And that as goes your public school system, so goes your property value. And so, our local Realtors here, as we have visited with them, Scott, have been very clear about that.
That they sell, your house will sell faster and for more money if you're in a district, you know, a good school district that's a community that's supporting their district.
So, raising taxes sometimes is not a bad thing, depending on a person's point of view.
Correct.
Okay. You know, Brian wants to know, where does funding come from for technology-based curriculum our teachers are presenting currently? Is this funding a temporary source, temporary power grants, individual grants written by teachers, PTO, et cetera?
Yes. It's many of those things, actually.
Talk about Power Up.
The teaching and learning budget is money that would be set aside for curriculum adoptions that would help pay for some of it. Power Up, you mentioned. Power Up was our pilot project last year that we were, really looked to the budget to defer some other spending, to carve out some one-time monies that we could dedicate to some projects across the district. And we were blown away, frankly, by the terrific response that teachers had. We had over 60 applicants that comprised both individual teachers and groups of teachers wanting to fund their project to help personalize learning, help change the role of the teacher and student, help change the way grading practices were affected. We were able to fund 24 of those, and those projects across the district at all levels really changed the way curriculum has been delivered. We've done things with flipped learning, which is really changing where the students are watching some instruction beforehand and then coming to class and getting personalized help from the teacher to students who are using technology to practice their speech, oral articulation, and pronunciation skills. And in all cases, we've really seen phenomenal gains, interest from students, excitement from teachers, and academic rewards.
You know, I think we're getting a lot of great questions here from our viewers and really informative stuff that we're getting. And I definitely want to encourage, we have about 30 minutes left. I want to encourage anybody who may know someone, of course, who, you know, is not logged on right now and have a lot of questions, just go ahead and give them a call and tell them to log on right now, because I think this is really informative. A lot of questions I didn't know, I'm getting answered right now. And Diana wants to know if additional technology for instruction will result in fewer or even elimination of textbooks. So, are we going to see the reduction of textbooks and go maybe towards, I keep using the word iPads, but iPads?
Electronic resources would be a better...
More technology. It's already happening, and our district is doing our best to manage that. But the way our world is, just like when I think about my business and how it's changed in the last five years and probably your business, too, with technology, our schools are changing as well. So, we are already moving into more of electronic. We won't completely be all electronic. We'll still have to purchase some textbooks and we'll use them. But certainly, if you think for sure, when I went to school, you know, a district would invest in a textbook and then they would use it for a long, long time.
Right.
And now, we're able with technology to have more flexibility and to be involved in different types of situations for one classroom. It just gives the teachers a lot more tools with the technology.
We're seeing these commercials, and you've seen them, the latest commercial on the phone. Oh, you know, the two-year plan. No, you don't have to wait for that two-year plan. So, my question, actually, when you think about that commercial is, okay, technology, right, and we have iPads now. Well, what's going to be come out next year in the next 12 to 18 months? And you guys are going to say, okay, well, we need more money now. What's to stop you guys from asking, you know, the district, I should say, not you guys, but the district, from asking for more money maybe next year or the year after?
Well, first of all, Scott, I think in our proposal this time, we've tried to make it really, really clear we're not doing a one-to-one initiative. And I know Brian has made statements about that and some of the questions that have come from our residents this evening, that we are not going down that road or that path, and that we are going to use multiple devices. And basically, I think the standard speech that I've been giving out in the community as I've been in front of Rotary groups or whatever is, how we teach, what we teach, and what is the best way for students learning are the devices that we're going to buy. And we don't have enough funding to fund a one-to-one initiative. You would have to be, remember that slide we had up earlier in the program?
Yep.
We would have to be on the far right-hand side where it would be $5, $6, $700 per student to really fund a one-to-one and then turn that over every five or six years for new devices. And we're just not interested in going that way instructionally at all. And so, consequently, we're not going to get into that arms race that I think the resident might be a little concerned about and buying something new. And I think the other side of it is, device price goes down the longer they're in the market, too. So, that'll be some benefit that we'll reap over time, too.
The other thing I'll say, too, is that, you know, what we're, he said it, what we're going to need in five years, I don't think any of us can say for sure. We're not going to guarantee you that. But what we learned from two years ago, when the technology referendum was not successful, is we shortened it. And we said, we'll do this for six years this time. Last time, we were going to do it for 10.
Right.
And we're going to take a look at it, and so, in the next six years, I'm going to be able to tell you, these are the tools that have worked and have been great for the district, and let's reevaluate and keep up with the times and try to figure out where we're at. And we can't tell you right now whether we'll need more money or not at that time.
You know, and question two, I think, is pretty important. I remember two years ago, when it failed, a lot of people in my community said, it probably failed because there's a lot of people that don't have kids that go to the district and they don't care. Why should I care if I don't have children that go to this district? I mean, we touched on property values, but give me another example of why people should care.
I think another good reason they should care is because the kids that are in those classrooms today are the carpenters, doctors, attorneys, newscasters of tomorrow. And I think Bob Stevens from Ridgeview has done a great job. He's done some video work with us, Scott, and we have it on our website, talking about 21st century skills that kids, young adults, need today for tomorrow, or they won't work in his health industry field whatsoever. So, if we want to be taken good care of later in life, a part of life that I'm getting closer to every day, I think we want to equip these students with the best learning environment possible. And in today's world, it includes technology.
Billy at home is really concerned that this isn't going to pass. I'm not sure about question one or question two, but let's just, for argument's sake, say both. Carol, I think this is a good question for you. What can he do as a parent, as a member of the community, to try to push everyone towards passing it, if that's what he wants?
Make sure you vote.
Yeah, right, right, which is very important.
Which is very important. There is, it's a year when there's nothing else on the ballot. We don't have any other elections on the ballot. So, we need to encourage people to make sure that they take the time from their busy lives to go and vote in November 5th. And so, there's four locations where they can vote, and that's on the website. Probably the easiest way to figure that out is look on the website, because there's only four locations.
Do you have to go to a specific location to vote?
There's a chart, we have a chart on the screen right now, Scott.
There's a great slide on there. So, we have four locations where you vote, depending on where you live, yes. That's where you go vote. And then also the...
So, to be clear, just for people, if you live in Chaska or Chaska Township, you vote at Chaska Middle School West. This is not like a presidential election where they give you a certain spot to go vote.
Right, based on your neighborhood. Those are based on neighborhoods.
This is based on city, just so, I think this is a pretty important part we need to hit at home.
And Chanhassen is at the rec center in Chanhassen. The people in Victoria and Lake Town Township go to Victoria Elementary. And then Carver, Dahl Green, and San Francisco Townships go to the Carver Town Hall. And then also, very important to point out is the absentee voting, because that's very easy to do. And it's step-by-step laid out on the website, but you can get an absentee ballot and mail that in and do that. And we, people have been doing that for a month or so, I think, since September, middle of September. And so, if you're not able to go vote on November 5th, then please try to do it absentee. There is, we're seeing great community support, too. There is a community group that is organized and been working on it. And I have to kind of commend the district, too. If you want to learn more about it, Dr. Bauck and DeeDee and everyone, they've been out talking to everybody and have done at least 30 presentations out in the community. So, there's a lot of information out there, so I hope that people take advantage of that.
I think Abby has a question for you, DeeDee. She's talking about question one, and if it fails, there's going to be programs that obviously are going to have to be cut. I know that we have touched on this some before. Maybe Abby came in a little later, or maybe we weren't clear on exactly which ones would be cut. Has there been a list? X will be cut, Y will be cut, Z. Can you run down maybe a few of them? I know you probably can't do all of them.
Yep. Well, we talked earlier in the presentation that there would be reductions in the fact that we would have to increase class size, so reductions being that we would cut some teachers and programs. And that was about four teachers or four students increase in every class. We also would be looking at making reductions to the six-period day, changing that. That would be significant at our secondary levels. And all of the items that we have talked about are on our website. So, you can see the exact list of what it is that the school board has reviewed.
And what's that website, really quick, for people?
It's www.district112.org.
I put you on the spot.
That's okay. And there is a section for referenda. You'll see it right on our front page. You can click on that, and it'll have the entire list of what is being proposed. If the referenda question passes, we won't have to deal with it. But if it does fail, it is a framework for the school board to look at. And they'll go further on by having some public input and refining this to a further degree once that's necessary, if it is necessary.
And Jen wants to know, as we move toward computer-based learning, how many families in the district do not have access at home? And what is the plan to help them succeed? I think that's a great question, because you know what, there, some families are very challenged, especially in these economic times. You know, you learn about this stuff at school, but you can't go home and continue to use computers, laptops, iPads. And maybe that might put people behind, maybe, and wouldn't put the kids behind, I'm not sure. But, you know, can you answer that question?
I'll start, and maybe Brian would like to join in. Basically, I know we've done some survey work, and it seems to me that around 90% of our families do have not only computers at home, but also internet access, Scott. But what we'd be looking at is also purchasing devices that kids could take home as loners. So, if they did have that internet access, but just lack the device necessary, we would allow that to take place. And I know some of our area districts do likewise if they're not in a one-to-one arrangement. In addition to that, though, we had an interesting conversation with some of our chamber members, SentryLink and a few others, that may have some interest potentially partnering with us and taking a look at if a family doesn't have internet access at home, what can we do to help promote that and have that, you know, take place? Where that goes, it's all speculation at this point. We just had a couple companies step forward and say, if the referendum question is a reality in the district, it is approved. We might be able to help you in that area. And in addition to that, I had a couple companies say, maybe help you in the area, us, you, being us. In the area of refurbished computers, that could be donated to families who don't have any devices at all. So, we'll follow up on those kind of loose ends if the question is approved. But we'll also have the checkout devices, and I don't know, Brian, is there anything else?
I think it's a great question, because even if the number's very small, it does feel like that family and those children, you know, are at a disadvantage.
Of course.
So, I know at some of our schools, both at the secondary and elementary level, we've extended the school day, making computer and computer access available to families so that we can bring families in and use in-house computers.
I mean, kids really get engaged when they get on computers. I've seen it firsthand. Awful little topic, just a little bit, but I do want to, since this question was brought up, if you are a parent out there watching and you don't have that ability, affordability, can they contact the school district to see what can happen right now, even if question two does not? Okay, so just give the district a call and tell them your situation, and maybe you guys can help out.
We can, we might be able to help out.
Either way.
That'd be great. Now, Todd writes, you know, he's really happy to see all you school board members answering all these questions. He says, they're clearly helping us understand. A little pat on your back, you know, you guys are doing a very good job. You know, I think he wants to know kind of how you guys individually, and maybe we could do it in 30 seconds or less each one, because I know we want to get to some more questions, have actually been out there helping try to get the referendum issue, the questions answered in the community, maybe, not just here. Why don't we start just on the line, Carol?
Sure. I kind, I answered that a little bit, but I'll go through it a little bit more, too. The district has been out giving presentations to any group that will listen to them, really. Rotaries, we've been to the city council meetings, we've been to the coffee houses. We set up times in the coffee houses where district staff, people, and also school board members have been there, meeting with the people, answering their questions, trying to do it in an informal setting and provide information with that. There's neighborhood groups that have asked either a district staff person or somebody from the school board to come and talk about it, too. And then there is that community group, too, that has been working on it and is kind of a more formalized, you know, organized group that's also working on it.
Would that be the similar answer for all you guys, or if there's different, let's please continue.
I would just add a couple of the avenues that we've been doing. You know, you mentioned the presentations. I think DeeDee and I have done about 50 of them. We have two presentation teams. We do know that we've received a couple endorsements, the Southwest Metro Chamber. Chaska City Council has endorsed it after presentations given to those bodies. But in addition to that, we have a lot of information on the website, Scott. People, if people go to the website, they'll see just, they can see everything. They can see the presentation that we're doing publicly to small vignette videos that cover specific information, a lot of the questions that are being asked tonight, where they can go get some good data and facts. We've been, online 112 goes out to all our parents every other week, so that information's been out. School Report came out in September outlining what the issues were to all residents in the community. We have a legally required mailer that will be sent to every property owner at the end of this week.
So, everyone should know this is coming up?
Everyone should know.
And if you can't, again, you can vote absentee, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And just call your, call the district?
They can call the district office. They can call any of the schools. They can go on the website and get an application. You can do it in person. You can do it over mail. There's a lot of avenues there that they can complete the absentee ballot.
And again, this is like a real vote. I will say, you have to be 18 or over to vote.
Correct.
If you're, you know, the question Tom wanted to know, can high schoolers vote? If you're 18 and over, you can vote.
That's correct.
Obviously, we can't have our sophomores voting.
That is correct.
You know, Kevin wants to know that if chaska.net could provide internet access for online schoolwork for those 10% of the residents who maybe don't have that internet access, have you guys worked with them?
They may be able to. We haven't asked the question of them.
Okay.
Those other two, couple providers that I didn't, I don't think I named by name, but they stepped forward and said, hey, we would like to partner with the district on this. So, we could go back to chaska.net, too.
Sure. And how about the districts, our district, how does it compare to other districts with questions one and questions two? Have you done any research on that, Brian? You're shaking your head, yeah?
Definitely. Well, I think we pulled up the graphic number four earlier about the capital project, which would address question number two, that right now, we don't have any capital project that's dedicated for technology. Jim mentioned earlier that part of our capital dollars are spent on technology, but it comes nowhere close to what other districts are spending. So, the graphic that you're looking at now really shows the spectrum of some of our, some of the neighboring districts, where on the far end, we're looking at just under $800 per student, down to Bloomington at $220. And so, even with our proposed capital projects, I think we'd be at the lower end, but we think it's a manageable number that we can live with and still do great things.
Is that $236? Where does it, I mean, is that in the middle of like all the school districts in the state? Or do you know that answer?
This is just the West Metro school districts that we're looking at. And so, you know, we don't have all of those. Most of the technology referendums, my experience has been, has been in the metropolitan area. It's not outstate Minnesota. So, we don't, we just looked at the ones that are nearby us. A second chart, kind of to follow up on that, is chart number four, which relates, excuse me, number threes, which relates to our operating referenda. And this chart is the Seven County Metro area. And so, for question one, the average is at green line.
Okay.
And Eastern Carver County is the yellow line, all right?
Yep.
And so, to the left are all school districts that have a much larger referenda that we have. So, we're kind of right in that middle. If our referenda were not to pass, Scott, we would be at the very far right-hand side, which you can't even see on the chart. We would be below anyone in the Seven County Metro area.
I know, obviously, the technology and security questions, question two, you know, it may be up for debate on whether or not people will pass it. Are we truly worried about question one?
I'm always worried about every question, Scott.
Sure.
I mean, that's just a flat-out basic answer.
We're in trouble if question one, are you in trouble if question one doesn't pass?
We will have to significantly change what this district is about. And our whole vision of personalized learning that Brian's talked a little bit about in the area of using the right tools in the classroom, that's going to, that's going to be severely hampered if not be able to go forward at all. And we believe that that's a key to improving student achievement across the district. So, yes, it's a major hurt to the district and to the programs and services that we provide children to young adults in our community.
Sure.
In the past five years, we have had to reduce our budget, and that's, it's never fun. Those are the worst meetings that exist for the school board. And so, we've reduced the budget about $6 million in the last five years. And that's very difficult to do, to go through the list, as DeeDee was talking about, and try to figure out. You know, we've always tried to keep it away from the classroom, because we know our community and our parents tell us that's important to them, class size. But then that means other things have to get and give, and that's when we have to reduce other things, and that's difficult.
Scott, if I could just have chart number 11 put up. We talk about quality. I know that the state exams kind of come and go with whatever political regime is in power at the time, but the ACT is a pretty standard measurement. And if you look at this chart, our viewers look at this chart, you go back to 1999, we had about 71% of our students taking the ACT at that time. This past year, we had 85%. Over the last three to five years, we've been right around 83% to 88% annually. And yet, our scores have been going up, even though we have an increased number of students taking it, increased free and reduced lunch, which we touched on earlier in the show. And yet, our test scores are improving. That's part of that 9.1 million. It's the things that we've put in, that value add, to keep that quality on the right trending line. We don't want that to rescind and go the other direction.
You know, we're at a time, obviously, in our country where people are worried about the economic situation. We have a government shutdown. People are certainly, clearly worried about everything that is going on. What if they say, okay, maybe one, yes, we got to pass that, but two, maybe let's wait. It was two years waiting for this time. It will be on the ballot next year, or do you have to wait two years? How many years do you have to wait to get those kind of things back on the ballot?
Operating levies do have to wait, but you went right to question two. Question two is a capital projects levy, which means you can come back out. State law allows you to... State law allows you to come out, much like a bond referendum for building a school, Scott. There are windows during the calendar year, and I can't remember how many windows there are. I think there are about a half a dozen of them, where you can come out and ask either a capital projects question a second time or a bond referendum.
How long?
I think the next window wouldn't be until December or February.
So it would be a couple of months, but we said they would wait.
It'd be a couple of months. I'm not sure the board would decide to do that.
Sure.
A lot of time people's, you know, people will tell us, we just told you no, why are you coming back two months later? What's changed?
Right. What about question one? You said there was...
Question one, we'd have to wait a full year.
A full year to wait.
A full year.
And so that would mean this 2014, if I'm doing my math right, the 2014, 2015 school year would be minus that nine-plus million dollars.
Correct. That is correct, Scott. We'd have to wait till next November 2014 to ask the question again.
So we wouldn't be able to implement any of that stuff, get any of that stuff back until 2015?
That is correct.
Okay. Well, Christina at home, she wants to know, if you're concerned that if we don't maintain at least the bare bones in technology and digital learning, that families would open and roll to other districts? Maybe, Brian, that's a good be a question for you.
Well, I think that's, that's a reality, that if people don't see the quality that they're desiring for their students or their children, they're going to look elsewhere. So I, I think it's a reality that, that we worry about and that we face, and that we would definitely face if, if that were the...
Do we, do we have funding from anywhere else, such as Chanhassen High School? I mean, you know, is there funding left over from that, anything to that magnitude?
Sure, I can answer that question, Scott. When we issued bonds for Chanhassen High School, it was specific for the high school and then any other improvements in that area. And all of those funds are gone. They've been spent, and they're required to be spent within a certain amount of time after those bonds are issued. So we don't have the luxury of having additional funding left over for that, from that, to spend on any type of technology.
Okay. Well, Doug at home wants to know, $14.7 million total cost over six years. He just, he just can't get past, I think, the $14.7 million. Do you want them to think in those big terms?
Well, I think they have to look at all the data. You know, it's, it's $14.7 million over the six years, it's 2.45 annually. Look at your individual schools and what they are receiving for that. As Carol mentioned earlier, Scott, we went with a shorter time period. Most districts will ask these questions for 10 years, not six years, because we wanted to demonstrate to our residents and to our parents that those tools are very useful in the classroom, they're helping us achieve personalized learning and increase student achievement. So I think there's, you know, sticker shock whenever you take a look at it in any, it depends on the person's perspective. So we want them to study the issue inside out, from the largest figure to the annual figure, to what's happening in my child's school, and then make their decision based on that.
I know that's over the next six years, but what about long-term? Tom wants to know, do you have ideas what we can do for this community? Is it going to start costing us more and more dollars down the road? And I think that's always a concern for anybody in this community, whether you have a child in the district or not. You vote for one thing. Okay, are they going to start asking for more, DeeDee?
Well, first of all, question one and two both have certain length of time on it. So we wouldn't be coming back prior to that, for that, those questions.
So you can't, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but you, so if in terms of technology,